Just waiting for the big guy. I know, it's exciting. Next to the concerts. Like to call the meeting to order if everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our, Peter Quigley is not with us tonight, in case people are wondering why there's an empty chair. He's out in California. And I'm just gonna say he's surfing, because I don't really know what he's doing. So our first order of business is approval of the minutes from November fourteenth. Did everybody read the minutes? Any comments?
I may have to read the minutes of November fourteenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have anyone here for public comment? And I will say we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting and then we also have it again at the end in case we are so inspiring you choose to speak later on. So come on up and state your name. We know you.
So some of us is repetitive, but we just wanted to, a few of us that couldn't be here because of the orchestra, wanna just put three things out there that we request your support on. The first is Dr. Antinucci's level funding budget that has been submitted. The second is, so it doesn't get lost, is in his, the unfunded needs, the Duxbury Middle School reinstating the teachers. So as something, as an item. And then third, the support of the proposal for the Chromebooks. So just putting that out there before the vote. So those three things.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, reports for the school committee, Dr. Antinucci.
I'm going to defer.
Okay, you're gonna do the awards?
Oh yeah.
Let's do that.
Sorry about that. I'm gonna defer because
Because of the awards.
Something I forgot about just now. But we actually have some, some student recognition tonight. We have several winners from Duxbury High School of something called the Word Right Challenge. And I'm going to invite high school English curriculum supervisor Karen Baines up to talk about it and present the awards to the students.
So yes, I'd like to recognize students for their performance on the Word Right Challenge. It's a national reading competition for students in grades nine to twelve. Each test requires students to engage in close reading and analysis of fictional and nonfictional works from classic and contemporary periods. High-scoring students may receive recognition for their performance on each of the four tests throughout the year as well as on their cumulative year-long performance. All Duxbury Honors and Advanced Placement students in grades nine to twelve participate in this competition as do all college preparatory students in grade twelve. And approximately sixty-five thousand students nationwide participate in this competition. So first, if we could recognize two students who distinguished themselves for their cumulative performance on the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen Word Right. That was four tests over the course of the year. Hadley Wilson was one of only thirty-one students to earn highest national honors last year out of approximately sixteen thousand participating sophomores nationwide. Hadley, come on up. And Lauren Burns was one of twenty-one students to earn highest national honors out of approximately fourteen thousand freshman students nationwide. Lauren, come on up, please. And then I'd also like to recognize the students who performed at the top of their class here in Duxbury on our Term One Word Right Challenge in October. And those students are, at grade nine, Julia Riley. At grade ten, Landon Howell and Frances Bayston. Grade eleven, Piper Geisler. And grade twelve, Benjamin Cuto. Congratulations to all of these students for their, for their very strong reading skills and their commitment to their, to academics. Good job, folks.
Hey guys, we have certificates for all of you. Karen, medals? We also have medals. I think you guys might know your own, but we also have medals for two of you.
Two students on their, here is a performance, and so Hadley and Lauren. Who gets ready, his medals are tied.
I'm gonna come into the classrooms tomorrow, make sure you have them on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Benjamin.
Nice tickets for you.
Piper.
Landon.
We also have some nice Duxbury swag. Just a little token, something you can use.
Don't call any of us, we'll take your picture.
Come on up.
Now let's get cozy. Well done.
Yeah. Okay. So no other?
I don't think, not for me.
Okay.
I'm gonna pass.
Okay. All right, next for our reports is Dr. Klingman.
And I will be deferring also because I have my MCAS presentation coming up a little later.
All right. Mr. Poole.
All right, I just have a few items I just want to update you on. As I said the last school committee, we submitted the end-of-the-year report to the DOE, DESI, on time, but we're still waiting for the town accountant to sign off on it. So as soon as she signs off, then I'll bring it to the chair. At that point. Regular transportation, we're gonna have to monitor that closely this year. Two things are happening. We have a child, foster child, being transferred from another town to here. And so we had to pay for that, that was unexpected. The other thing is gas escalation. That's almost every month we seem to have about a $2,000, $2,200 gas escalation charge. So that's, could be around $38,000 issue for us.
Together? Both of those? Or just the gas?
Yeah, because what I usually do is I, when I do the transportation, I usually put in a gas escalation amount, around $20,000. So I'm hoping that the overall gas escalation isn't gonna be much more than 20, so the real cost would be maybe just the foster child. At this point.
That would be above and beyond?
Yeah. Two lines that we ended up putting into the operating budget. One was for translations, and the other one was non-sped tuition. Before, if we had those costs, it would go into the Superintendent Contractor Service line. So breaking this out, I think we can have, we can budget it a lot better.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
All right.
I've kind of lost track. When was the last time we had a quarterly report on that?
At the end of the first quarter, so.
So is it coming up at the end of December?
October, December, end of December.
Right, okay. And that'll be the twenty-four line, that kind of one-page twenty-four line?
Yeah, I think last time we gave you the summary, but we also gave you the full chart of accounts.
Right.
Kind of like by cost center.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that'll be end of, end of the second quarter.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So we'll get it in January?
Yeah, probably. You can get it before then, but I think
For a meeting.
We'll have a meeting.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tanner, student rep.
So, I got four quick things. So the first thing is, the week after Thanksgiving, Student Council held their White Out to Wipe Out Hunger event, food drive. And that was basically to restock the food pantries between holidays. So that was a great turnout. And then the second thing is that winter sports are now in their second week for the high schools. So the following sports are hockey, swimming, swimming and diving, basketball and track. Also, last weekend was the senior class plays in the pack. And that was kind of a tradition for senior classes to put on plays and with the majority of their class in them. So that was a great thing to watch and a good fundraiser for the senior class. And lastly, just a busy month for the music department. They have a couple concerts coming up, including a band concert on the thirteenth and an ensemble concert on the eighteenth.
Excellent.
And then for my report, just piggybacking on the concerts. I know the fifth graders have their concert December eleventh, which is always hilarious because it's their first year. And then you see, 'cause there was one mom who posted her child when they started in fifth grade and then he just won some like award graduating from college. It's pretty incredible. We have great programs. I spoke to one of the DEF members and so far with Answer the Call, they've raised $20,112, which is awesome for all of us. And then some other news that has been in the news. I'm a big reader, you guys always know that, I'm always telling you what I read about. This jumped out at me. Researchers have discovered that abuse is now, it's always the nature-nurture debate. Abuse is actually, they can prove that it's being embedded in kids' DNA. So when you talk about like the cycle of, it's just one more thing for teachers and guidance counselors and all of us to have to contend with. But I thought that was kind of frightening, that it's actually changing people's DNA. U.S. life expectancy has dropped due to suicide and overdoses, per CDC report, which I thought was another frightening statistic. And then the other news was the high school did a sleep study of the students and discovered that of course the high school students aren't sleeping as much as they should. And two of the factors that the high school nurse pointed out was screen time because obviously the kids have their phones and laptops in their bedrooms and they shouldn't, and they do. And the other one is lack of fresh air, because they don't go out and play like we did when we were kids. So then they're not, they're just not as tired. So I thought those were some interesting topics. And then I'm gonna save a couple others for new business. The other thing is we've been doing the strategic planning meeting. And I thought, going along with the stress, and tell me if I heard this right, there were, from the surveys, there were teacher surveys, student surveys, parent surveys, there were a bunch of different surveys. And when they kind of organized the data, it came out that basically when you ask students and parents what their number one priority is for the district, it's getting into college. And if you ask teachers what their number one priority is for the students, it's safety and feeling good about themselves, which is really interesting. Because the teachers are the ones in the trenches and they're thinking, if you have all this, then you'll get there. But I think as a society, we're so driven by college acceptance that that comes out as the number one thing for a lot of people. So that's my report. Our discussion items, the first is an overview of the Alden School Reader's Workshop model. And that's gonna be the re-
With some support.
Good. I was wondering why these cute little people were here.
Do I have it or not? Ray Marie, we can, we Let me, I'll No, I can put it on mine, sorry, I didn't, Danielle's gonna share it with me.
Mrs. Benoit, do you remember what you called your presentation?
Reader's Workshop. Do you wanna plug in Katie's laptop?
I think we're good, Ray Marie, yeah. Yeah, you wanna do that?
While we're getting the technology set up, I'll introduce Mrs. Santos to you. This is Katie Santos, she's one of our remarkable third-grade teachers. In a moment, I'll let her introduce to you her three remarkable students who are here to tell you about Reader's Workshop. I sort of feel like the best way for you to understand what it's all about is to hear it from the kid's point of view, because what's more important than how these guys feel about reading in their classroom, right? Katie has been a lab classroom teacher, what we call a lab classroom teacher, for three years now. This is your third year doing that. And she and eleven of her colleagues deserve a huge shout-out because they open their classroom door and have their peers come in and sit and watch them teach what they're learning in professional development about Reader's Workshop. And their colleagues come in and sit around and watch them teach and ask them questions. And it's like teaching in a fishbowl. So they deserve a ton of credit. And then all of our Alden teachers deserve a ton of credit because they're working their tails off to learn this. And there's a lot of reading and a lot of unpacking for every single unit they teach. And they're spending hours and hours outside of school and inside of school talking about it and learning it. So they deserve a ton of credit for this. So without further ado, if you wanna introduce the kids. And they can tell you all about it.
All right, well, good evening. I have Abigail Zatowsky, Ronan Donovan, and May Pike here to tell you all about Reader's Workshop. And they are very excited, they've been working on this for quite a while. Oh, it's good. First, we have reading in the past.
Everyone was reading the same story each week and it got really boring.
Everyone had lots of paper and pencil worksheets and it made people tantric and it was a big mess.
We had little variety in text length or levels, so we never had a chance to get into a higher level in reading.
We had no choice in what we were reading, so kids didn't like it.
There were leveling reading groups all year long.
We had reading tests every week.
Stories weren't meaningful or interesting to anyone. We read because we had to, not because we wanted to.
And now we have reading now.
In Ms. Santos's Reader's Workshop, we are working on making reading life and shaping our reading fluency.
We are more into reading now because we've learned how to read things out of our comfort zone.
When we're reading nonfiction, I love how the text is very different than fiction.
In fiction, I love that it can be realistic or fancy, but in our fiction, it's always real information.
I love Reader's Workshop because when we're doing, when we are doing our nonfiction texts, we are given a bunch of great strategies to help us tackle more challenging books.
If you came in during Reader's Workshop, you would notice students quietly reading using the strategies Ms. Santos taught us to help us evolve in reading. We also set reading goals each week and work on them independently.
My goal is to read twenty minutes every day in school. I can work through this goal by finding a book I like so I can get deep into it and not get distracted.
My goal is to summarize the meaning of a text. I will work toward my goal by using an organizer such as boxes and bullets to find the main idea and the details in the paragraph.
My goal is to read over each section and summarize the text. I will work towards this goal by stopping and talking about the information I learned with a teacher or reading partner.
Reader's Workshop is a great addition to our literacy education. We wouldn't want to work on being better readers any other way.
And now the top ten things we love about Reader's Workshop.
Number one. We have fun lessons with Ms. Santos, like learning about the text features. For example, we learned about the glossary, the table of contents, and the index. We read a really cool book about platypuses and learned a lot of interesting facts. Did you know male platypuses have venom in their tails?
We're always learning useful strategies to become better readers. For instance, the five-finger test helps us figure out if a book is too hard or too easy. We also learn to read books like they're gold. This means to read books like they're very special.
Spending large chunks of time between fiction and nonfiction is a great experience because we're learning about both and seeing the difference between them. We also learn that we have to read fiction and nonfiction differently. In fiction, you can relax and read it before bed, but in nonfiction, you have to really, you really have to wake up and soak up all the information.
We talk about our reading all the time during whole-class lessons. A lot of times, we get to turn and talk with reading partners about something Ms. Santos shared with us. Other times, you get to read with the partner about a text. It's great being able to have conversations as a whole class about the text and getting a chance to see how to think about reading out loud.
Good way to stop and jot things like, I wonder, or I didn't know that. This makes us better readers because it helps us understand the text and think about what we're reading. We also use post-it notes every day to make predictions, jot down bursts of curiosity, record facts or details about reading, about our reading. We use a variety of graphic organizers to help us understand the books, texts, or passages that we are reading. It gives us a purpose for reading and keeps us active as we read. This includes identifying the problem and solution, making predictions about character traits and actions, or forming opinions that might differ from the author's point of view.
During Reader's Workshop, we get to pick just right books by skimming and scanning to see if the words are too hard or too easy. We, we have, we have also learned not to judge a book by its cover. Instead, we can read the blurb on the back and read the first couple of pages to see if the text hooks us or not.
We improve our reading by using monthly fluency cards that include a lot of tricky words and phrases to read. We also do partner reading with a timer to become quicker, more, read more accurately, and improve our expression.
We are building stamina for tackling harder books. In September, many of us could only read for five or ten minutes without stopping. Now, most of the classes reading or writing are about reading for thirty or more minutes. Ms. Santos even has to tell some of, some of the students to stop reading. We also take AR tests, record our progress on our daily reading logs in school and at home, and have fluency checks.
Ms. Santos has shared amazing books to read aloud, like Stone Fox. Even though some of us had read it in second grade, we're still on the edge of our seat right up until the bitter end. Usually, at the end of any lesson, lots of kids are eager to get reading their own books, books Ms. Santos has shared, or great books that are shared briefly by friends and classmates.
Hopefully, now you know why we love Reader's Workshop so much, and hopefully you do too now. Thank you.
If anybody has questions about Reader's Workshop, we're happy to answer anything that the kids didn't-
Not the kids.
Seems to be working?
Yeah.
Great job, kids.
Yes, and I love it as much as they do, so.
And it's all grades in Alden, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Third, fourth, and fifth.
Can, can the children tell me a bit more about partner reading?
Absolutely.
Is there something?
Guys, do you wanna come up?
Do you mind?
Who wants to talk a little bit about partner reading?
I can. So when we do partner reading, we usually read with the partner. And sometimes we talk about the, the passage that we were reading. And we really see the different perspectives of like, I agree with the author or I don't agree with it. And maybe we have similar agrees and different agrees. So sometimes we do it with like a timer to improve our reading. But sometimes it's just without a timer and like, like as Ronan said, you just, you just explain like why you think this or why you think that. And it just helps to see the different perspectives of your reading. Ms. Santos picks reader partners so that we have seats, so we don't have to like, take like five minutes off our time that we could be reading to sit. And like, we have our partner for months.
Right, so each month I assign them, like November reading partners and then December reading partners. So they have a chance to work with different people. And so when we're doing our whole-class lesson, sometimes I'll put a question out there and I'll have them turn and talk. So they have a chance to kind of get their ideas out, because they can all share during that whole-class lesson, because it moves kind of quickly. So, so far it seems to be working really well, and they do a good job talking.
And you have books that you keep at school and then different books that you bring home? Or do you bring them back and forth?
Well, in libraries, we sometimes pick out books that we use, but sometimes we bring them home. But we have book bins that we put our books in. But when we switch between nonfiction and fiction, we always have to clean them out because we can't have both, because we usually don't read both at the same time.
Well, the books from Ms. Santos's class, we help, well, we put them in our book bin and we keep it there. And we have books from the Alden Library, which we can bring home. And then we visit the Duxbury Free Library every two weeks and we pick out books to like bring home. And, yeah.
We have a lot of books. At our fingertips.
So, when we like take out books, it's good because in class, we kind of have to read something like, if we're doing nonfiction, we have to read nonfiction. But when we bring, if we check out books at the library, we can get both.
Right, and that's, you usually have some free reading time. So during Reader's Workshop, we read whatever genre we're working on. But there's always some time where we have early finishers who get to free read and they get to go back to the books that they know and love and do on their own time.
Do you have any more questions?
I was gonna ask you, my, my children tell me it's really bad manners to write in my books when I'm reading. I jot on the margins. What do you guys do when you jot your ideas?
We use sticky notes to jot them down. We also have Reader's Notebooks to use.
That's a good idea, thank you.
We can, like we said, we use sticky notes and we write down the ideas usually on the page. And some people in our class are working on this, our science fair project, and they are like writing a whole like essay about gravity and using all the information that they learned. And I think Reader's Workshop is a great way of helping them do that by learning strategies, like, just learning strategies to help them. So, but sometimes, people just pick up a book like, oh, this looks fun. But then they just put it away, like right away, and like, oh, I don't wanna read this book. But what you do, what, like a trick is, like you can use the five-finger rule. Like, it's where you read the blurb on the black, the blurb, the blurb on, on the back. And then you pick some random page in the middle. And if you, you put up as many fingers as the word you get wrong. And you, if you get like one or two, that means it's too easy. If you get like three or four, that means it's pretty good for you. But if you get like five or four, it's way too hard.
It's way too hard.
That's great. I should do this one.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next up, we have report on the two thousand eighteen MCAS results. Dr. Klingman.
Thank you. I think we're gonna have all of our, everyone, presenters come on up. I'd like to thank, um, Rita Marie Benoit, the Curriculum Supervisor from Alden School, Karen Beans, the English Department Curriculum Supervisor for Grade Six to Twelve, Brandon Jocelyn, the Math Curriculum Supervisor for Grade Six to Twelve, and Kathy McCarthy, the Science Curriculum Supervisor for Grade Six to Twelve. So, I brought all my friends to the school committee tonight to present on the MCAS. And we have a tough act to follow, everyone. Maybe gone before, broken out of the galant egg. So, I just wanna start by saying that, um, there's been so many changes to the MCAS accountability that we're still trying to get a handle on how it all works and the calculations that go into setting the targets and our results. So, I'm gonna give a little bit of a bird's eye overview, and we're still kind of learning how this all works. So, um, in your packet, there was, um, a long presentation with, with a lot of explanation slides. So I don't know if you can recall if you've had any questions about, um, the accountability data because I'm gonna kind of go right into the Duxbury results if that's okay. So overall, I'm gonna go right to, oops, sorry. Start there. Um, the accountability report. So overall, for our Duxbury Public Schools classification, we were classified as not requiring assistance or intervention, which is good news. Alden School was identified as meeting their targets and not requiring assistance. Duxbury Middle School was partially meeting their targets, not requiring assistance. And Duxbury High School had that unusual, um, with the way they classified it as low participation rate, requiring assistance or intervention. And the subgroup that caused this status was our students with disabilities and high needs. And so I'm gonna get into that in a couple of slides down. So overall, if we look at the progress towards improvement targets, and again, I had mentioned, um, at a meeting, I think back in October, the state is setting improvement targets for Duxbury based on our own targets that they're setting for. So we're not being compared to other districts. We're being compared to ourselves and our own progress towards meeting our targets. So currently, Alden, so actually, an accountability percentile between one and ninety-nine is reported for schools. So Alden progress towards improvement targets, they were ninety-five percent meeting targets, and their accountability percentile is ninety-four, which is very strong. DMS progress toward improvement targets, thirty-five percent partially meeting targets and a seventy-one accountability percentile. So you'll see as we go through why we have some of the numbers that we see before us. DHS progress towards improvement targets, seventy-seven percent with a ninety-eight accountability percentile.
Can I just ask you that, looking at DMS, the thirty-five percent partially meeting targets, does that mean that sixty-five percent are entirely meeting targets?
I think that means that we're partially meeting targets because only thirty-five percent of our targets are being met.
Okay, okay. Thirty-five percent of the targets, not thirty-five percent of the students. Got it.
So, the DHS low participation rate, which gave us that, um, requiring assistance or intervention, was based on, if you look at all the students enrolled in our classes at DHS, the percentile of students that were enrolled and students assessed, they figure out the percentile. So when you have a percentile under ninety-five, you automatically get put on that target of not meeting that participation rate, which has to be ninety-five percent or above. So we literally had three students absent, um, during MCAS testing in that high needs and students with disabilities group that brought us down to ninety-three percent and ninety-one percent. And we're given an MCAS window where we're allowed to administer the test. And if a student is out for a medical reason or if a family had planned a vacation during that block when the test is being assessed, then we're given a zero for that and we're, it's counted against us accountability wise with students participating. So it's just really important. I know families sometimes have situations where they have to travel, but that MCAS window is precious to us. We want to have every student that we can taking the test so that we don't end up getting identified or flagged for having students not participate. So that's really important.
Would that mean that if a student was ill, they did not make it up or they cannot?
They, we always have makeups available, but you run out of time in the window. So say the test is being administered and there's a week left of potential days where you can administer the test and the student continues to be either ill or on vacation, and they come back after that, you cannot get an extension. So the deadline is the deadline for the test to be completed. And they give you a, a large window, but we have to schedule when the tests are being administered. So if you were going on vacation, you couldn't take the test before you left and then have the rest of the students take it on their assigned days. It's pretty strict about when we can administer at the high school, days are prescribed to us. And so we're really limited in when we can offer the test. Chronic absenteeism is an important measure. Um, this is something that, they take grades one to twelve and they look at our student attendance. And if we have students that are missing ten percent or more of their school days, we're being flagged for that. So again, I know, um, sometimes it's unfortunate that we have families that have to take a vacation or a trip during the school year and then if their child also has an illness that year, it ends up really kind of adding up with school days. So we just ask that parents pay close attention to have their kids in school as much as possible if they're able to be here because it's unfortunate to get marked down for our state accountability because we have students that are not in school. We know that. We have a hundred and eighty important school days and we need the students to be in school as much as possible. So we have some, um, flags in our Duxbury Chronic Absenteeism Indicator. So we're trying to earn four points in all of these targets. And as you can see, for the all students group, everyone at Alden, we got three out of four, um, for that. But we had zero out of four for our lowest performing student subgroup and for our high needs subgroup. So the high needs subgroup is made up of students that are, um, learning, with a learning disability, students that are English language learners, or students that are, um, in the low income subgroups. And also the lowest performing student groups are based on MCAS performance and growth. And so that particular subgroup as well, um, for DMS, also zero out of four for that subgroup. Um, DMS was three out of four for all students and four out of four for high needs, so that was good. And Chronic Absenteeism Indicator for the high school, three out of four for the whole student subgroups. Lowest performing was great, four out of four, and high needs subgroup was zero out of four. So they look at our, they look at our rates of absenteeism within our subgroups as well. So overall, this is overwhelming slide here, but overall accountability results on all those targets that they're measuring us on, um, Alden School met or exceeded all of their targets. They did really, really well at Alden School on their testing. If you kind of drill down into the areas where they didn't meet their targets, um, chronic absenteeism for that lowest performing student subgroup, our economically disadvantaged group, high needs and students with disabilities. So that chronic absenteeism piece at Alden was the only place where we didn't meet our targets out of many indicators. The middle school, they met their targets in ELA for the all students group, did not meet their targets in ELA for the lowest performing students. Math achievement, science achievement for all students, high needs, lowest performing, and did not meet targets in math growth, chronic absenteeism for lowest performing students. So we really have to drill down into all of this data and see how we can address this individually. So certainly, we want to reach our targets, and there's a lot of targets that we need to focus on. But that's something that, as administrators, we're taking a close look at. The high school has different, um, targets set based on some different criteria that I had listed in the beginning part of the presentation. Um, DHS met their, or exceeded their targets in ELA and science for all students, lowest performing, high needs in math for all students. They met their targets for their four-year cohort graduation rate, which is only measured at the high school level, extended engagement rate, annual dropout rate, advanced coursework completion. We get credit based on the types of courses that we're offering and the rigor of those courses. The high school, we did not meet our targets in math for our lowest performing students with disabilities and high needs students. And we didn't meet targets in ELA for growth with the lowest performing students. And then again, the chronic absenteeism that I listed on another slide. So, when it comes to MCAS, our new terminology that started last year was either the students are meeting the expectations or exceeding expectations, which is our goal for every student. Um, also, students can be partially meeting or not meeting expectations based on their scores. Um, student growth, student growth percentile is something that we look at. Um, it's a measure of how much a student has improved or grown academically from one year to the next as, as compared to their academic peers. And their academic peers, they're compared to other students who have scored similarly on MCAS tests over a period of years. Um, and using this comparison of other students who have scored similarly, um, you can get a better picture of their growth because it takes into account each student's starting point. So we're measuring growth based on other students that scored similarly. I can't say that word at this, at this, on the microphone. So how do we do student growth percentile? Um, we want to look, um, have a goal of student growth percentile at least fifty. And if students in groups are getting a SGP of fifty or higher, they're meeting the target for that indicator. So again, they're using the, below you see the different points you can earn for exceeding the target, meeting the target, or being below target. So on these charts, and I'm getting to the end of my piece, um, these are the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. And I broke this down by our whole student group and our student with, students with disabilities subgroup. It's our largest group, and I think it's something we need to pay close attention to. Are our students with disabilities meeting or achieving expectations on MCAS testing? And certainly, that's our goal. Um, it's not surprising for students to not be achieving meets expectations or exceeds in the younger grades, I would think, because we've identified their learning disability area. We know that's a challenging area for them, but we want to see growth as they move through the grade so that they're progressing at least at, um, forty and up range. We want to see their student growth percentile continue to rise. And so that's something we pay close attention to. So if you look at the scores, um, we had seventy-three percent of students achieve meeting or exceed expectations. And we had forty-seven percent of our students with disabilities achieving, meeting, or exceeding expectations. So if you go through the chart, you can see the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding in the students with, students with disability subgroup are lower and something we want to pay attention to. Because each one of those numbers there represents a student that's working really hard in school and we want to see them closing that achievement gap and we want to see their growth continue to be strong. And if you look at the student growth in that disabilities category there, the students are making strong growth. Um, grade eight, we have an average of thirty-seven point nine percent. We want to see that a lot higher in our students with disability subgroups. Our, our growth percentile is pretty strong across the board in ELA. We go to math, students meeting or exceeding expectations in math. Um, we definitely have seen some weaknesses in math, which Brandon is going to talk about some of the interventions and how we're gonna solve that issue. Um, but, um, our students subgroup are all students with seventy-two percent of students and are all students in grade three, while thirty-nine percent of our students with disabilities are meeting or exceeding expectations. If you look again in grade eight, we see an area of weakness there. Um, percent of all students achieving proficiency, which is meeting or exceeding, is forty-nine percent. We had only two percent of students with disabilities achieving, meeting, or exceeding expectations in math. We're gonna talk about some ideas that we have to address that issue. Um, this is a year that we're reviewing the math curriculum. So we've had a full curriculum review from an outside vendor that came in earlier in the fall. We have the work our math subcommittee is doing and we have some ideas to be able to address some of these weaker areas in math.
Would it be fair to say, when you're looking at this chart and the preceding one, that if you look at the percentage score of all students meeting or exceeding targets and the percentage score of students with disabilities, that the, the ratio is somewhat similar until they get to the middle school, and then the students with disabilities seem to experience or demonstrate less?
The percentages are going down a bit at the middle school.
Yeah, uh, in, as a, as a, in comparison to all students.
Right.
Right.
The students with disability subgroup is counted twice. They are concluded in our all students group, and then they're, they're kind of separated out. We'd like to see our, we'd like to see the gap lessening. As the students in, advance in the grades, we'd like to see the percentages continue to rise for the students with disabilities group, achieve meeting expectations. And we also want to watch really closely the, the growth percentile to make sure those don't dip below forty to fifty as a minimum.
But, I mean, comfortably, they seem to converge again in tenth grade.
They do.
So it seems to be.
And I think it's easy for us to say, don't worry about MCAS. When, when the students get to tenth grade, they tend to be fine. But it is not easy when you're the parents of a student that are not showing the growth that you'd like and they're getting to be in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And this is something that we want to address as a district. This isn't a special education issue at all.
Right.
This is, um, an all of us issue and how we can work to make sure that our students with IEPs are making the progress that they should be.
I was gonna say on the math, on, you know, that we have, you have eighth grade highlight in red. Yeah, it's across the board in the middle school, six, seven, and eight.
Yep.
So.
Definitely. So next steps for the district, we want to look at how we're providing intervention for students in ELA and math at all grade levels. We want to make sure that if students are in need of intervention, how are we administering intervention and is it, is it effective? We have, um, Title One funds that we use in the district. We want to make sure we're spending that Title One funding wisely and that the programs that we're bringing in and the resources are effectively helping the students make gains. Um, we want to develop a plan to address the achievement gap. Um, and like I said a minute ago, we need to increase the growth of students with disabilities in our lowest performing student subgroup. The lowest performing students are not always students that have an IEP or a diagnosed learning disability. Occasionally, you'll see a student that falls into that lowest performing student subgroup that hasn't been identified. And when that happens, we really have to look individually at that student to say, why, why isn't the student receiving support? Is the student receiving support? There are other things going on that can be added to that student's program to make sure they're not in that lowest performing group. Um, and I had said again, this is a responsibility of all educators, not just a special education issue. We want to make sure that we're looking at student growth. Um, all the teachers are responsible for their students' growth. It doesn't matter if that student's on an IEP or not. It's not just the special education's teacher's job to make sure that we're, um, doing everything we can for the students. I also think we need to look really closely at team meetings that are MCAS dated and make sure we have appropriate IEPs so that we're meeting the needs of all students so they're making the growth they should be. Another recommendation is just for us to examine how we're delivering math instruction at the middle school and high school level as part of our curriculum review cycle, as well as to look at what interventions are available for students. We have lots of interventions available for students at elementary. Um, do we have a lot of interventions available at the middle and high school for struggling students? And I don't know that we are doing the best job at that that we can be, and it's something that we're going to look at together. So with that, I get to turn it over to our curriculum supervisors. And Al, forward if you want to just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, great. Uh, so I'll talk a little bit about Alden. You've, you know, you have the information and all the numbers in front of you, and I really probably don't need to spend much time on that. Um, however, if you end up with questions about any of that, please feel free to ask and stop me. Um, generally speaking, I'll echo what, what Danielle said. We are tremendously pleased this year with Alden's performance on MCAS. We, we did have a great year. Um, our job as educators is always to look deeper and look at where, where can we continue to move the needle? So obviously, we always keep a lens on that. Um, but I do want to take a minute to celebrate the kids and the teachers' hard work that got them to the results we had last year. We, we have seen some great movement in the needle. Um, on this slide, you can see the comparison, um, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. And, and you know, basically, um, in English Language Arts in grade three, uh, we gained twelve points in the, uh, twelve percent of the, uh, meeting and exceeding expectations group. So they grew by twelve percent, and in math by, by eight percent, if you combine the two. Um, and then if we go to grade four, in grade four, in ELA, we have sixty-nine percent of our students meeting and exceeding expectations and in math, seventy-four percent. And those student growth percentiles in each look decent as well. Um, and then when we look at the year-to-year analysis in fourth grade, um, in ELA, we dropped three percent. Uh, the number of students in, uh, meeting and exceeding went down by three percent. And in math, up by seven percent from twenty seventeen. So we want to keep an eye, obviously, on the ELA in fourth grade and, um, take a look at what might be, where those pockets might be that are making that score drop a little bit. Um, the next slide is really just the student growth percentiles, but Danielle already talked about this. We met our targets in ELA and exceeded our targets in math. So, um, we can go on then to fifth grade. And in fifth grade, we had seventy-nine percent meeting and exceeding in both ELA and math. And, um, the student growth percentile in math in particular is seventy-one percent, seventy-one point five. That was pretty good. Um, we do think that our Envision Math Program is making a difference. We are now, the kids in fifth grade now have had it all three years. Um, actually, four, I think. They started in second grade with it, so. Uh, and when we look year to- Uh, and when we look year-to-year for fifth grade, in ELA, we gained eleven percent of kids into the meeting and exceeding category, and in math, seven percent of kids moved into those two categories. That went up by seven percent. And in science, we had the, the legacy test, the last year of the legacy test, but we did take it online. So the standards were combined standards, some of the old standards and some of the new. And our students that are in advanced and proficient combined, uh, we have seventy-two percent of our fifth graders there, and the state had forty-eight percent, so. And then looking at year-to-year, um, in twenty fifteen, sixty-four percent of our kids were meeting and exceeding. In twenty sixteen, that went up to sixty-nine. In twenty seventeen, it dropped back down to sixty-four, and in twenty eighteen, it was seventy-two percent. So that's up, um, eight percent from the year before and three percent from our best year to date with that information. And, um, I think you had in the, in the slides you got, there was a link to the crosswalk of standards that we gave the teachers, um, so that they could keep an eye on which standards they wanted to focus on, and I think that was helpful for them. And the new Elevate Science program is showing great promise already, so we're kind of psyched about that. I think that's going to keep moving us in a good direction. So our, initially, our takeaway is our, we're pretty happy overall with our growth and our achievement, and the high-needs population, um, while we did well in some areas with that, we do want to keep watching that group and especially that group, um, the disabilities group. We want to be closing those, that kind of gap between the growth for that population and the rest of the kids. So we want to keep an eye on that as well. And, you know, teachers, we always press ourselves for what are the areas of relative strength and weakness, so if we had to pick things to work on going forward. In ELA, I think writing, um, was a bugaboo for the essays, um, with the constructive response and the essays and conventions in particular. And, you know, you, the students can score four points for topic development and three points for conventions, and I think, I think we all agree that we would expect to see our kids scoring a little higher on their essays. And then in math, geometry was, has been an area for the past couple of years, and we've had an eye on that and we continue to. We've done some things like move it earlier in the year because it's one of the last units in Envision, so we've moved it up closer, you know, to try to get it in before the test. But we also are really picking it apart to make sure that Envision addresses enough for the geometry, and is there, is there some way we need to supplement that? So those are some areas we're going to work on. Test taking has a big, uh, the online test taking has a big impact, especially at the third grade level. We noticed things this year, like students, you know, there's a, a character box for an essay, and while they get twenty-five hundred characters to write the essay, the box is only so big and it isn't. It's part, they type to the end of the box and they don't, they don't recognize that they can, if, if they keep typing, the box will just keep expanding. So it's those kinds of, some of that's digital literacy skills as well, right? That we have to keep building in the kids, and the state just put out blank, um, for, like, the, the online practice test section now has just an empty character box that you could, a teacher can use their own essay prompt and have the kids type it in that box, just to give them practice here and there and in, in getting used to how that works, so that you can remove any of those kinds of things that are getting in kids' way. The next couple of slides were, um, oh, Aldous, did I talk about this yet? I sort of did. The things that we are thinking are helping, Reader's Workshop is, is already, our reading standards, um, when I did the item analysis on the reading standards, you know, we had gains of like twenty-three points against the state in some places, nineteen points above the state, eleven points above the state on the reading standards. So I think it's so far going really well. We certainly didn't lose any ground. Sometimes when you implement a new program, you lose a little ground, and I, we didn't see that with the Reader's Workshop, so I think that's hopeful. And writing goes on to review next year, and so obviously, we'll be evaluating our programming at that point. MCAS analysis will be a part of that work for the subcommittee, and we'll also be looking at our, do we, you know, are we addressing grammar, are we addressing conventions, are there places that we need to beef that up? Um, and that's it on that. And the next couple of slides were, I just put some images in of, to give you an idea of when the teachers look at, um, MCAS data, they take graphs like this, and, um, the, the pink line is the state, and then the, the blue, the school is green, the district is blue, which is always the same line. And we look at those places where we don't sit far enough above the state. We would love that line to have three inches between the two, right? We're always looking to be up there, but when you look at a pattern like this, there are clearly a few places circled in red where we were right close to the state. So those are the places we look at first, and we, we dig into those questions to see. Two of those, the first and the third circle are actually the same question as one of the essays. And it's the writing portion and then the language port, points, so it's scored twice. So I just thought it was helpful to see that. And then, um, and this is an example of the grade four, how they have to, uh, answer an essay question. So the passage on the left goes on for days, like, it just scrolls down and down and down, and they read and they read and they read. And then the question on the right is the essay question, and you can see that character count twenty-five hundred, and the boxes below that, you can't see it, but that's where they're typing and needing to kind of persevere and stamina, and those are all the things we're trying to build with the Reader's Workshop as well. And then in the next slide is, this is an example of a constructed response, which is similar, um, twelve hundred characters, but they're answering one basic question based on a text versus writing an essay. And then when we get, oh, that, I think that was it then. Um, there's, there was a link underneath, but it went to an example of a, just a selected response, which they're interesting to look at. They're out there, you can look, look up the released questions and see them. When you look at a, you know, a third grade selected response question, which you, we think of it as the old multiple choice question, but it's still a big passage with all kinds of, you know, graphic features and so forth that they have to synthesize, and then the multiple choice question is, you know, it's, it's hefty. So, um, you know, it's a learning curve, and I think we're, we're doing well with it, and we look forward to continued growth going forward. Does anyone have questions on that, on the third, on the third through fifth grade stuff?
No, thank you.
Great. So I think we're going to alternate as we go through ELA math and then with science. What if the science version makes a little chime in? So we'll start with sixth grade.
Okay. So, um, secondary English teachers have done a significant amount of work, um, over the past year to revise instruction and assessment, especially in the area of writing. These revisions took place in order to align, um, our curricula more closely with the twenty-seventeen Massachusetts frameworks. Um, and so I'd like to start by thanking the teachers for the work and just generally for everything that they do for the students. Those frameworks require students to become practiced in synthesizing ideas and information from multiple sources, um, across varying genres, uh, which is a very different kind of, uh, writing and thinking than, than students traditionally had to do. So students have been identifying resources that serve to supplement the literature and allow the students to make, uh, connections across the texts. Uh, the frameworks also require that we empower students as creative writers, um, and from our perspective as teachers, that's, that's a wonderful thing that we can now have students write creatively, um, while we're still adhering to the frameworks and, um, and preparing students for MCAS. And of course, the students enjoy the creative writing as well, so it's a, it's a win-win all around. And so the work that we've done this year has very much paid off in terms of our MCAS scores, and I, I like to think, um, more importantly, in terms of students' ability to, um, to think critically and creatively. So at, at sixth grade, we saw significant gains, um, from the previous year, especially in the area of writing. On our twenty-seventeen MCAS, for instance, we had nine students in the exceeding expectations category. Uh, the twenty-eighteen MCAS, we had sixty-four, uh, students move into that category. Whereas in twenty seventeen, writing scores on idea development, as well as on conventions, were either at or below state average. In twenty eighteen, we were well above state average on, on all of those, um, components of the writing, of the writing questions. And generally, uh, there were no questions, um, on which we scored, um, uh, below, um, or, uh, or even at a state average, and that is true for writing and also for selected response. So we were very pleased, um, to see that, you know, that the work we'd done had paid off in that regard.
In terms of math, right, so maybe not quite the same story, but, um, we can get into that. So with math being in the review year this year, um, I've been fortunate enough to work, you know, my background is a high school teacher, but I've had reassignment days with both the sixth grade teachers, both the seventh grade teachers, both the eighth grade teachers, to really kind of dive into the curriculum, and we created new maps, new outlines, and went through the entire year's worth of material almost as a day-by-day basis to kind of figure out where some of these gaps could be happening. So I'll kind of speak to them as they come up on the slides. For sixth grade, it seemed like the, um, the area, you know, in, in Reed and Marie had that slide where you can look at how you did in comparison of the state averages. So it seemed like, well, it didn't seem like it was. Statistics and probability, those types of questions were kind of really where we fell below state average on multiple of those questions. In speaking with the sixth grade teachers, that's an area where they don't get to. So based on the timing of the MCAS, that's their last unit, um, the window for middle school extends until May twenty-eighth. Grade six has pretty much have always taken it at May first, May second, so that's, you know, a good twenty-two days of, uh, you know, missed opportunities. So I worked with middle school staff to push that date back, which should get the statistics and probability stuff, you know, at least a little bit better, in the right direction.
So, um, a grade seven, we again saw significant gains, um, in, in ELA from
the previous year, uh, again, especially in the area of writing, um, especially in narrative writing, uh, as well, uh, creative writing. And there were no areas in which we scored below state average, um, in either the selected response, um, or, or, or writing either. And as at sixth grade, generally, we saw a shift, um, upward, uh, in, in student scores. We had more students in twenty eighteen exceeding expectations than in twenty seventeen. That's twenty-six, twenty-six students, uh, were in that category in twenty eighteen versus fifteen, um, in twenty seventeen. And fewer students, seventy-three, in the partially meeting expectations category in twenty eighteen than in twenty seventeen. We had a hundred, um, in twenty seventeen, so a big, a big difference there. We still have a small group of students, um, who are not meeting expectations, and of course, we are, um, you know, always looking for ways that we can, um, help to bring those students along and work with them to, um, help them to master the skills, um, you know, that they're going to need.
Yep, and in terms of math, so seventh grade, uh, for the past few years, this is where we've introduced a, a semesterized geometry course for seventh grade, um, students. It's, it's not, it's not really elective, it's something that every kid would take, which is kind of replaced like a, an elements type of course, but it really just focuses on not only grade seven, but also grade eight standards in geometry. So when that was implemented, they've taken out, they took out the geometry standards that were normally covered in the regular general education seventh grade classes, as well as the eighth grade classes. So I think you'll see a, even, you know, maybe a sharper trend in, in eighth grade. But, um, if you looked at the short answer questions for seventh grade, um, three out of the four worst selective response questions were geometry standards, and then for the constructive response questions, two out of the three lowest performing multiple, or selective response questions, uh, not selective, what did I say the first time? The, uh, constructive response types of questions. Were geometry, which is interesting, right, because we just put in a seventh grade geometry course. So then I ran the report with the kids who took it first semester versus second semester, and the kids that took it second semester did a lot better. So it was just the ability to retain information. And one of the things that we're doing now is to basically have a couple week, two to three week long career, or review on geometry, especially for those kids that had it first semester, leading up to the MCAS, just to kind of spiral some of that learning back. And we think that that can, um, certainly make a positive impact, especially on those questions, which I think are largely responsible for the lower, you know, growth percentile.
So grade eight, um, again, we saw gains overall from the previous year's MCAS. Uh, there were no questions on which we performed below state average. We performed at state average on one selected response question, uh, having to do with inference, um, and at state average, uh, on one of the, uh, three essays, um, which, uh, was synthesis writing. But overall, we saw gains, uh, in the writing scores, um, across, otherwise across, across the board. Again, we had a significant increase in the number of students, uh, exceeding expectations, thirty-three in twenty eighteen versus, um, thirteen in twenty seventeen. Fewer students, uh, seventy-three, partially meeting expectations, um, versus a hundred and eleven, um, in twenty seventeen. We did see an increase in the number of students not meeting expectations in twenty eighteen, uh, nineteen, up from six, uh, in twenty seventeen. Um, and so that is something that we need to dig in, into and take a look at what is happening there with those students. But, you know, otherwise, um, gains, you know, especially with the writing.
Um, and then in terms of math, again, just not to beat a dead horse, but there were eight questions where we scored between five and fifteen percent below state average. Every single one of those eight questions was a geometry standard. So again, pretty eye-opening when you look at the data. Again, I think you look at that seventh grade semesterized course covering eighth grade, um, geometry standards, and then they're never reintroduced prior to the MCAS for these kids, so their retention is kind of, you know, obviously, we can see in the data, it's not, it's not sticking as well. So for the changes that we made this year when I did those recertification, or reassignment days, um, you know, we have a three-week-long geometry unit now that's going to lead up into MCAS, which would hopefully, um, you know, better those, better those types of questions.
So that sounds like we're chasing the test. Do you think that is follow from everyday math? The program that these students had? Because I think in vision, they're getting more geometry at a younger age.
Yeah.
Just from what I've seen from the curriculum.
Yeah, but it didn't show up at Reed and Marie, am I right? And he didn't show up in the test.
It's still, relatively speaking, it's our weaker area, geometry, still.
So it's kind of a leitmotif from grade three onward, you know, that geometry seems a bit.
But in court, like impacting eighth grade certainly much more than, than the seventh grade, but it's still impacting the seventh grade kids, especially the kids that took it first semester. You know, so you can imagine if a kid took geometry, uh, first semester of seventh grade and then are taking an MCAS test in spring of eighth grade, you know, how much, how much are you going to have if you never spiral back to it? So, um, again, it's something we're aware of and looking at in, in terms of, you know, proposing, uh, you know, maybe a different semesterized course, maybe something that's a little broader, but at least for the curriculum in seventh and eighth grade, there is a, you know, very conscious movement to cover geometry even outside of that semesterized course.
I think that one of the other things is we've, we've been looking at ways to incorporate the geometry throughout the year. And, I mean, you can apply geometry to any kind of problem solving, so, you know, that's another way to sort of keep it fresh, but I mean, we see the same pattern with the science tests that are multi-year tests. It's really difficult for children to, you know, learn content in one year and then have to come back to it for a test in the spring of the following year or even two years later, so certainly seems like a factor.
Sorry. Do we know what other districts that are outscoring us are doing? Like, why their kids are getting higher geometry scores? Because this has been consistent for years.
Yeah, the geometry semester course is pretty unique, um, you know, and it's something that Dexter does, so. We're looking at that.
You are.
Conviction model.
Yeah, I mean, we're missing something.
I've never heard of it before, and I think it's something we need to look hard at.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, it's a math review year.
Yes.
Well, we would have been doing it anyway, because a math review year.
It's also some of the way in the, the questioning with the geometry questions. I know at the elementary level, you know, students have always had to classify, um, plane figures, for example, but the way the question asks it now, it's a much more rigorous question because it's not as simple, straightforward. You know, they're sorting it and then they, they're on multiple criteria and then applying a problem solving to it. It's, it's, some of it is, are we teaching geometry in a way that asks them to think about geometry in very rigorous ways? So that might be where we need to go next.
Finally, we have some science from the middle school.
And I, um, I am the last holdout of the legacy test, so, uh, spring twenty eighteen is the last year for the legacy test in eighth grade. Not true in the high school, but, uh, this is the last year of the old standards. Uh, in spring of twenty nineteen, we will go to the new standards. We traditionally and last year, uh, do better than the, than the state in, in all the categories. Um, you know, going forward, we're going to have to... You know, going forward, we're going to have to kind of start over and recalibrate based on the new tests, based on the new standards, and based on the new reporting categories. Can you go to the next slide? What I find most interesting is, is over time, we're fairly consistent until 2018. And, you know, being a scientist, I try to see which variables have been held constant and which haven't, and our curriculum had not changed through those four years. Our, most of the staff remained consistent throughout the years. The one change, that again, correlation, I'm not going to say causation, but for the 27, 2018 school year, we lost a .8 FTE teacher, and our numbers of students in the class rose by an average of five to six students per class. And I think you can see, again, correlation, not necessarily causation, but the trend. And if you go back even to as far as 2013, I don't have that slide, but you can go back and the numbers are very consistent in terms of where we're scoring in the categories until last year. And again, that was just something that kind of stuck out to me. I'm very anxious and excited to see how our students are going to be doing. Oh, I'm sorry. One other, one other variable that I didn't, that I should include is that the 2018 test was the first year that the science was tested online. So it could be that as well, or a combination of both. We are going to, we have just adopted a new curriculum this year, grade six through eight. We've also shifted our standards, and they're now more interdisciplinary, and we're spiraling more. So I'm hoping that that will help, again, as Rita Marie said, that three-year time span when you have students that are, you know, mastering a huge number of topics, from physical science to life science to earth and space science, as well as technology and engineering, over three years, you're asking a lot of students. And we're hoping that our new curriculum, which the teachers are excited about, the kids are excited about, I'm really hoping that that will, you know, we're excited about the curriculum. Hopefully, that will also reflect on the test, but I think we're producing better science students all around.
Did you want to talk at all about the grade 10? Well, this is grade 10 ELA.
Yeah, so at grade 10 for ELA, this is, of course, it was the last administration of the legacy MCAS. There were no areas in which we performed below state average, and there were many areas where we excelled, way above state average, especially on reading comprehension. There was an increase in the number of students scoring in the advanced range, 199 versus 177 the previous year. And for both years, we had very low numbers of students in needs improvements. And as we have been doing at the middle school grades, at the high school, we're working to revise instruction and assessment to prepare students for MCAS 2.0 and its associated skills and content.
And then for 10th grade, math, same thing, last year, the legacy test. So it's going to be hard to compare going forward. But some of the concern was already outlined a little bit by Danielle, those students with high, or the high-needs students and the students with disabilities. They report as two separate subgroups, but when you run the reports, I ran a report with the failing kids and the needs improvement kids for high needs, and then the failing kids and needs improvement kids for students with disabilities. Same 13 kids that were, you know, resulting in falls. So certainly, obviously, a concern to get those kids kind of, you know, the supports that they need. Right now, with the, with the, you know, sequence that we have, there is no foundational support class for them, which there used to exist once. I think that could benefit them. We're targeting them in, you know, through iLab or something like that, being able to kind of get those kids what they need. Those are kind of the biggest takeaways, especially in the high school.
Yes, I created a folder here of item analyses for each grade level, the secondary level, and also my own overview of results at each grade level with links to questions for anybody who might be interested.
Great, thank you.
This is the ninth grade biology test. 2018 was the legacy test. We are also going to have one more year of the legacy test, although it's combined standards in 2019, and before we go to the MCAS 2.0 in 2020. As you can see by the graph, we outperformed the state in all categories. Danielle, you can, yeah, thank you. We're very consistent in the biology MCAS. The advanced proficient combined is between 94 and 95% of all students as we go through. Again, you can see 27, 2018. We still have a 95% of our students in advanced and proficient, although the ratios are changing. And again, we lost a .4 FTE teacher. We had to lose a section of biology. And again, it's making numbers of the students in each class, higher student, teacher-student ratio. And so again, I don't know if it's a blip or a trend, but we'll get one more year to see how that, what that looks like at the high school.
So for the students who fail in 10th grade, when do they take the exam again?
So we give, science is unusual in that we test ninth graders. If a student fails, and we usually have three or fewer students that fail the biology MCAS, they have a February retake. So students, we had two students that failed the June 2018. They will do a February 2019 retake. We are working on getting tutoring for the students and extra support before the February test. As a rule, we also have that available for at-risk students for the June MCAS, and we give them several weeks of extra support to prepare for that. So right now, they only give biology as a February retake. And I don't see that we're going to be changing our sequence or our testing anytime in the future. So I would imagine that that will continue even with the MCAS 2.0 as well.
Was this the first year that this was online as well?
It has not, it's actually not online. It is pencil and paper. And this year, it's going to be pencil and paper as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's disappointing to see that, and a subject where Duxbury has kind of really outpaced and had significant proportion of students performing in the advanced category, that that's under pressure, because it didn't used to be.
Yeah, and similar, thank you Rita Marie for putting that item analysis graph up there, because what we do every year is go through and look at those items. And it doesn't seem to be consistent year to year. The questions and the content changes. So sometimes it's the question, sometimes it could be the student's background knowledge. Also, students coming in from out of the district, we don't necessarily know what their background is, and so we ask them to take this test, and sometimes they have the same background as our students coming through our middle school, and sometimes they don't.
So you said you lost a section of biology?
Last year, yes.
So what does that mean? How many, so basically, a full class of 20 whatever students now got dispersed into the other classes?
So about three extras, two to three extra students per section.
And it used to be there was an advanced and a regular biology? There was?
We have honors level and college preparatory level.
Same classroom.
In the same classroom.
Right.
And that's been consistent. Well, it predates me, I'm guessing it's about 10 years. So that hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed, okay.
That could be the math, too, where they used to have the accelerated honors in college.
Do you have any other questions? If you go through the presentation and have any additional questions, especially on accountability, or if you'd like a deeper item analysis, we can certainly come back, but we thought 51 slides was enough for tonight.
Yes, thank you.
I guess my only commentary is every year, you know, we go through this and we teach our kids everything we possibly can, and, you know, the scores always dip in middle school, and we chase it, and then by high school, everybody passes. It's just, it's kind of a strange thing we do to our students. I guess that's my personal commentary.
It's not necessarily unusual that your highest performers are at the high school. I mean, it's not really a secret, but it's a graduation requirement. So I don't ever envision a situation where the state wants 60% of their kids failing the 10th grade. So, I mean, there is something to be said for the rigor of the 10th grade test.
Yes.
That's not an excuse for the middle school dipping, but it is, there's a reason why the 10th grade tends to be higher.
And I think developmentally, when the kids are taking the test, the test questions are not straightforward, like Rita Marie mentioned. They really do expect a conceptual understanding and the ability to kind of take something that you learned and transfer it to maybe a whole different area without any teacher support. So the students are used to being able to have the teachers explain what's going on. Here's what we're asking you to do. Go ahead and get started. When it's MCAS test, it's really totally independent. You're reading the directions. You may have some accommodations, but there's a lot of, not only understanding what the directions are asking, and sometimes it's tricky wording that they use, and you kind of peek at it, and you're like, oh, gosh, with no teacher direction. And they have to self-initiate, get started, organize their response. And it's a lot to ask students developmentally. And if you were to give the same test with some teacher direction, our students would perform much better. But it's just, it's a whole new ballgame when they take the MCAS. And like you mentioned with filling in the blanks, the kids see the blank and they type a few sentences, and they think they're done. And we can't really say too much. You can say, I don't think you're done. I really don't think you're done. Keep typing, but we can only, you're not allowed to prompt. We have to follow, it's a standardized test, we have to follow the script. And so there's a lot of variables that developmentally, the kids get better and better at the test taking while they're learning the skills. By the time they get to high school, maturity-wise, I think they kind of have mastered that skill of getting started, figuring out what's being asked in them, being able to do it.
And to your point earlier, Kelly, about, you know, is that a little bit chasing the test? That's, I feel like, and I'm just going to speak for myself, but that's the last thing we ever want to engage in. And I feel like our focus has bid to make sure that the instruction in the classroom is elevated, and if the instruction is high quality and the kids are engaged, our kids should perform on this test. We shouldn't, I mean, we obviously want to analyze it to see if there are gaps in the curriculum or instructional methods, but we, you know, and we always want to grow, and we always want to get better, but it's about improving the instruction.
We talked about it the other day, strategic planning, if you remember. I agree, we're not chasing the test, but we are chasing the standards. I mean, so this is a, you know, we need to make sure our curriculum's aligned with the standards. So to the extent that people say teaching to the test, I don't know what that means, but we are teaching to the standards.
Right.
And we have to, right? And so, and unapologetically.
Right, and if you teach the standards, then the kids should fare well, which clearly they mostly are. It's just that geometry subset that we're trying to just get in on.
Definitely.
It's only there.
I would agree with you.
And you inherited that.
Brandon, no pressure, but you have a couple weeks to kind of figure all that out.
I think we're making, you don't think we're doing it?
You are, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
A lot of work, thank you.
What did that justify?
Two, I made two comments.
Yeah?
Oh, I, one question. In terms of following a cohort from, say, their grade three MCAS to their eighth grade MCAS, for example, in ELA or math, does, are you able to do that with the change in format at that test?
We can, right now, we can follow it for two years, but we really can't compare results of the legacy MCAS to the changes, because not only did the standards change, but the test changed and the types of test questions changed. But I think what people can do when they're looking at their student results is just to look at the growth their children are making year to year. And as long as you're seeing strong growth, above 40%, closer to 50% and up, that's where we're really looking. So I think if parents are seeing that their students aren't making, if their student growth all of a sudden is stalled, I think that's when you start needing to sit down and wonder why. Why was growth not at least at that 40 to 50% minimum? But I think as this test gets to be administered for a few more years, we will be able to do that cohort comparison. But there's all sorts of things, all sorts of data and graphs that we can work with. You could do this full-time.
Sure.
There's so much data. But, so we certainly do do that, and we dig into it as much as we can. The administrators all participated in a full-day data workshop with a data specialist this past fall, and just looked at reports that are most effective, and talked about some of these accountability changes. The curriculum directors and the principals work really hard to do that data analysis to look at every single released test question. We're also limited by the number of test questions that are released for us to be able to work with. Many times, if we perform poorly on one question, they may not even share that test question for us to kind of dig deeper into it, so.
I was just wondering if you're trying to assess the impact of, the impact of teaching on students' growth over time, you want, ideally, you'd want to look at how a group of students performs over the years. Because if they all start out advanced and at expectations or exceeding expectations, and in eighth grade, they're still the same ratios of at expectation or exceeding expectations, then your value added isn't as great as if you started off with a cohort where very few were exceeding expectations. And you end up with a cohort in eighth grade where many are exceeding expectations, then you can conclusively say that your value added is really strong. And in Duxbury, I think it's relevant, because we have a very educated population. The children arrive at school pretty well-prepared to learn, and they have fairly supportive community and family environment in most cases. So you have to look at what the, trying to work out what's school and what's outside is difficult.
Shannon? So our next discussion item is the budget. And I just want to start out by thanking all the parents and community members who have written to us and to other town officials. We've received at least 40 letters so far in support of the budget, and I can tell you, I think it's made a big impact this year. And I, speaking for everyone, I think we're really thankful for the support. At this point, we were advised by the selectmen during a meeting the other day that they are going to recommend supporting our level service budget of $36,936,947. And just to rewind the tape, last year at this time, we were not there. We spent from December till town meeting floor fighting over numbers in the budget and trying to find money, and it wasn't there. We didn't even get level service last year. So this is sort of a very, very early Christmas present, and I know they are working hard to find this money. Last year, we went in and we asked for over level service. We wanted to restore the middle school teachers. So we went in and asked for, I believe, $176,000 above. This year, I think as a school committee, we have decided that we're going to support the level service budget. I think we're going to table an official vote until the 19th. Peter will be back, and we can take our actual vote then. But is there anyone here who wanted to speak to the budget? Mona, sure?
Hi. A little out of character for me not to have something written down, so you'll bear with me. My name is Allison Lindy. My family and I moved to Duxbury a little over a year ago. We moved from the Chicago area. I have three children, one at the middle school, who's a sixth grader, a son in third grade, and a daughter in second grade. So I get to be the proud parent of three children in three different schools this year. And I want to say, first and foremost, I want to thank everyone at this table, those who are volunteers and those who work for the district. You're all very dedicated, I appreciate your hard work. I've been to a couple of meetings here, and I am, I'm struggling. I've been to a couple of meetings here and I am, I'm struck by your intelligence, your commitment, and just the manner in which you conduct yourself. So I want to thank you for that. I do want to speak a little bit about class size. As I said, we moved last year. And unfortunately, when I, we moved from Chicago, I was moving from a school district that was also struggling with class sizes. And my son came from a first grade class with twenty-seven students in it. And I spent the better part of a year, frankly, fighting an uphill battle with the school board and administrators who felt that their hands were tied and nothing could be done. And so when I moved to Duxbury, I was really overjoyed to see elementary classrooms really kept at a reasonable number. But I'm distressed about what's happening at the middle school and the high school. And since I have three children that are just, I've just, my first, my oldest is in sixth grade, I've got three kids to get through middle school and high school. I don't relish the idea of fighting that battle for the better part of the next ten years. And so with respect to the budget, I, I'm, you know, part of the parents and concerned community members that has really advocated for this level services budget and advocated for the town to come up with the necessary funds to support that. Having said that, I feel that any budget that doesn't include money to restore the middle school staffing to the levels that are appropriate, isn't good enough and worthy of Duxbury, if I'm going to be honest. And I, even though I've only lived here for fourteen months, I feel like I've earned the right to say that. So I would, you know, my sort of comment to you as a school committee is please don't give up this portion of the fight. I realize that, you know, I recognize that New England politics are very different than Illinois politics, and town meetings are difficult, and I understand that. But you have my backing. You have the backing of a lot of parents. And so I would just urge you, as you consider things going forward, to include, if there is, if money is the issue for staffing, then let's come, you know, let's come up with the dollar amount that will fix that staffing issue and the class size issue. I was at the PTA meeting at the middle school yesterday, and I know that Sarah McGuire has mentioned that there are some discussions that are happening about how to fix it going forward. But I just feel that, as you said, Kelly, you know, we were able to come up with a level services budget in December that we didn't have in March of last year. So if there is a method to use the time between now and whenever you vote on the budget in two weeks or before town meeting, to come up with a dollar figure that would allow the middle school and high school class sizes to be restored to their reasonable levels, I implore you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Come on.
I'll be really quick. She said a lot of what I was going to say. I think I know most of you. I'm Heidi Filago, and I have two children here in town, a sixth grader and a third grader. And again, I've been witness to everything that you guys have gone through in the last couple of years. And I want to echo just the thanks for all the work that I know all of you have been putting in. I know it's not easy. I know you're up against some difficult people and situations. So I think it's awesome that you guys got the level services budget and that's really a credit to all the work that you guys have been putting in. I've come here today as the mother of a sixth grader. This is real for me. You know, we've been really happy in Duxbury. My kids have had a great experience in Chandler and Alden. And to be quite honest, my son loves middle school. But for me, when I see him in class with twenty-nine other students, and he's a pretty good student, but he's a sixth grade boy and he is very easily distracted, it's hard for him to learn in that environment. And honestly, it's not fair to our teachers that they have to teach in that environment. And if my son is struggling, I can't even imagine what students who aren't sort of academically focused are dealing with. So this is real and every day, every year counts for me. And so I know that we're so thankful that we got this level services budget, but my son's in seventh grade next year and then I have to wait another year. And I don't want to give up, you know, a couple of years. And so that was my feeling going into this. Watching the MCAS scores, I am even more frightened than I was walking into this room. Those statistics and those scores just underscore that, you know, there's a problem and we need to fix it and we need to fix it right now. And whether or not that's, you know, getting more money, which honestly, the schools deserve, or moving things around to accommodate this, but we need to come up with some fix. So again, I'm mother of a sixth grader, that's why I'm motivated here today. But you guys are doing great work and let me know how I can, what I can do to help you achieve your goals, because I know we're all on the same page. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to go first or you want me to go first?
Doesn't matter.
Well, I know you guys have, some of you have heard me speak about this yesterday at the PTO meeting for the middle school. But I would just remind you that what we're talking about, what you're talking about, what we've been talking about, is your money. It's not anybody else's money. So school committee is five people and we can ask for more of your money, but you can ask for your money. And I would suggest that you continue to do so. It has been enormously helpful to us to have you ask for your money to go to the schools. And so I would just suggest that you continue to make your voices heard to the people who allocate money in this town. Dr. Antonucci allocates money within the schools and school committee has decision-making power over the total amount of money that he works with each year. But the town has some authority or decision-making power over how much money we have. So in the end, it's your money and your voices are strongest, so.
Keep using them. So I'm the mother of a fifth grader who's going to be in that middle school next year. And she's my last one. And I like to roar. So I'm concerned also by what we saw tonight with the MCAS scores, knowing that now our math classes are loaded with thirty kids. So if we get reports next year that are good news, I'm going to be really excited. But I won't be surprised if it's, if there's not a lot of growth, I guess. And I was surprised to hear the science curriculum supervisor say that she had lost somebody and she thinks maybe that has impacted her scores, right? So the other thing I want to say, we, you know, I know you all know probably, but we went through municipal finance 101 with the finance committee so we could learn how the town earns its money and earmarks its funds. And basically, there's an eighty-five percent rule. So they only will set aside eighty-five percent of the prior year's budget.
Revenue, yeah.
Revenue, the forecast, and nothing more. So when they do that, every single town department is only going to get that allotment. And that is what they have been saying to us nonstop. So regardless of every single factor we have brought to their attention, here's the number. So I think it's been amazing that we have this group of parents that are saying, it is our money and we need to start looking at things differently. Because when you go to town meeting, which for people who did not grow up with direct democracy and don't really understand it when they go to for the first time, or just like, what's going on here and why is this taking six hundred hours? You find that at the end of all the operating budget and capital budget votes, there's a pool of free cash. Well, free cash is actually used for a lot of the capital budget and it's obviously very confusing. But we always have a big pool of free cash. Why do we have that? Because of the revenue forecast. So how do you get more money for the schools? I don't know. Maybe change the revenue forecast, which is what, you know, we sort of talked about a lot last year, but that hasn't happened and hasn't changed. So for right now, I think because we were only told two point six percent and we're going to get three point four eight percent, that's a huge success based on the confines of the town budget. But it doesn't mean that you, as a parent group, can't keep advocating for more. Because it's not a huge number to get back three teachers or four teachers, right? It might be huge from the town's perspective, but to us, it's not huge as far as a fiscal juggling of the funds. But when it's your child at the middle school and it's your MCAS score and it's your one chance to have your kid go through and gain those skills, they're going to take him or her through high school, it's a huge deal. And we totally, I think we all totally appreciate that. And Karen Whittaker has done absolutely amazing things at Alden. And Chandler and Alden right now are working beautifully and perfectly. And the kid, like, the things that they're doing in the curriculum and the scores are great. And then, we all know, middle school changes, right? You're changing classes, you're not with your one teacher all day long, it gets more confusing, there's more homework. There are a lot of factors going on. And if you don't have a relationship with an adult, right, or a teacher or someone in that building that you can go to and you're falling behind in math or you're falling behind in science and you don't know what to do about it, that is going to impact you through high school. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. So I'm totally with you. So keep, keep working at it and we, I think we all really appreciate the support and your advocacy and your, what you're saying, the message that's being put out there. Because, because you are all members of this town. You're not just parents, you're taxpayers. So it's your money, like Julia said beautifully. Okay, yeah? All right, so.
I think that is a question, yeah.
Just given the, you know, given what we're hearing tonight, given the situation with the MCAS and given the fact that math is obviously a core curriculum, is there any percentage in sort of going back and taking a look at the existing budget with level services and investigating whether any of these deck chairs can be moved around to rebrioritize some of the funds at the school?
I mean, the technical answer is yes. I mean, you could always, you could always go back. I think that the challenge is, you know, if you look at the list of, this is really weird position for me to be in because I would, as you all know, I'm sort of up for a budget challenge, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't want to just settle, but the tricky part with the middle school class size, by the way, both the middle school class size, we think it's a very high priority. All right? Matter of fact, I'm the first one to shine the spotlight on that a year ago. So it's, and it continues to be so. And we're, and we're making some progress trying to find ways to reallocate. And so, and to your question, we are looking at a potential reallocation, whether it's from middle, taking from middle school sections or different sections, right? We need to look at those types of things. But I do just want to say this aloud is, you know, that list of unfunded needs and that appendix in the budget is millions of dollars, right? And it's really not in priority order. Now, I could prioritize class size, right? Because I think it makes a lot of sense. But just even as it relates to MCAS, we also are looking for math specialists at the elementary level. Like, the quality of work that happens at the elementary level theoretically filters up to the middle school, right? So I guess it's kind of Sophie's Choice, like, where do you, you know, where do you, where do you pull from? But to directly answer your question, Ma, I mean, yeah, we could go back and reallocate. I would just say, the budget I presented, like, I'm really comfortable with. And I sort of laid it out, you know, for a reason.
Yeah.
And so going back, you know, I said this to the middle school at the PTA meeting, I'd say, it's a zero-sum game.
Right.
So it does have to come somewhere. Could we take it from somewhere? Yes. I think right now, I'm not sure I'd recommend it. That being said, I mean, it's the, you know, it's the will of the committee. And we can certainly go back and look at some options. But I think more importantly, and if you listen to Sarah McGuire speak about this, much more articulate than me, she really has some ideas about the middle school schedule and about her staffing allocations and some other creative ideas for potentially pulling to at a minimum address kind of what I call the hottest spots, right? The hot spots of class size. It won't fix all the problems across the board, because you can't replicate, what is it, two point eight FTE? But I think she's pretty confident that we will do better next year, at least at, with some of those higher class sizes. So I don't know. I mean, I don't mean to ramble when I, when I answer that, but I, the answer is yes, we could. I'm not sure I'd recommend we do.
Right.
It could be, just because it's got to come from somewhere. And then you're just, you're kind of causing another.
Another tectonic shift.
Yeah, yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, I think, however, it is a matter of equity in that looking at the staffing numbers and the teacher pupil ratios across the schools, the middle school is in fact, some of those classrooms are kind of egregiously out of range with the rest of the school district. So to the extent that Sarah can reorganize so that more students are experiencing classrooms with teacher-student ratios that are more the norm, then that would be, I think, an important step. Because it's difficult to argue that we should be continuing with a situation where some, certain cohorts of students or groups of students are disadvantaged. And that's kind of exactly what's happening. And I know that, you know, the choice was, the strategic choice was made to do the, to have higher class sizes around, for more capable students, but, you know, that's, it's not desirable.
It's not desirable, but that's a decision that any president of America would make.
Yeah, I mean, you've got to make a choice, right? And I understand it. But, you know, those students from an equity perspective have every entitlement or every right to expect what other students are getting. So I think that there's a kind of an imperative to do something with it regardless of how we end up with the money, you know? And maybe there's an opportunity for more money to come to the school district this year. I don't know if we can keep the pressure up on the town, but I'm, you know, I think just getting to where we are now has been an achievement.
Yeah. To that final point, can I just say, this, again, this is a very odd position for me to be in because I'm as passionate as anybody about getting school funding, but we cannot lose sight of the fact that this is incredible news.
Yes.
Where we are. And I, and related to the, you know, to the operating budget, we also got the vast majority of our capital projects fully funded. We've been told that our one-to-one laptop replacement is being fully funded.
Yeah.
I mean, this is sort of a remarkable position. Now, it says two things. One is that I think the town has the funds to do it. And we've been looking at the difference between the revenue forecast last year and the actual amount of revenue that came in. And in fact, I would argue the money's actually there. But I'd also say, and I have to, I have to thank the two people, at least, you know, Randy Reed, the town manager, and John Adams, the finance director. They are working really hard on behalf of the schools to make this happen. And I, I just will say, they are advocating for us. And that is something that shouldn't go unnoticed.
Right.
And to me, it's a, it's a sign that we're moving in the right direction as far as working collaboratively with other town departments. So I So anyway, I just want to sort of thank, thank them. I still think we have some work to do with some, you know, other, other town boards about the support for the schools, but it really is good news. So I don't want to lose sight of that, but all I can say, back to the middle school class sizing, class size issue, is, you know, Sarah is all over it. It continues to be a high priority for us. We know we need to do better. And, you know, again, should we look at other areas? Maybe. I, I just think the way the budget is built right now, I'm not sure if that's the best thing, you know, to do in the short term.
Yeah.
But it's certainly worth a look, you know?
Yeah.
I think we can put that on the table, and Danielle, we'll commit to that, to talking to our team, is to say, okay, you know, what would that, you know, what would that look like?
Yep. I think it's worth it.
Yeah, we have, I mean, I think we have to, you know, just in general, right?
Right, right.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to, one of the things, and I talk, I talk about this publicly all the time, is, you know, we do need to maintain some flexibility. So when you start squeezing so tight to fund one priority, two priority, whatever, that you're, we're just setting ourselves up for potential difficulties down the road. So there is a sort of a, a level of responsibility that we need to think about, you know, as we move forward. You can't, and that's the whole argument about level service, you can't keep on peeling, peeling it back so tight that you can't respond to unforeseen needs. So we could fix one problem here today.
Yeah.
And then be really stuck next year, you know, with the ability not to move.
Yeah, I agree. And, and I like your use of the word remarkable, because what's remarkable to me is that we're all jumping up and down with joy, that we, that first of all, we had a budget profit, process that conformed with standards of practice for finance committees and town budget authorities. And, you know, that shouldn't be remarkable. And that we're hopping up and down with joy because we have the level services budget in a town which is one of the wealthiest towns in the state. So, you know, it is remarkable, really. And so, you know, we, we shouldn't lose sight of that either, that it's great what we've achieved so far, but there's, that the road ahead is, still involves serious engagement with the process and the, the, the actual revenue.
Yeah.
Pattern for the town.
Let me follow up to that, it's another great point. Julie and I did this a little bit yesterday at a different meeting, so it's, you're just spot on with that. And I, I forget your, your, your quote, but it was about knowing.
Knowing when not to let go.
When not to let go.
Right.
And I, I just want to say, like, yeah, we're, we're jumping for joy a little bit, because it's been strangely smooth, at least ending to a, a pretty good process, but, and again, I'm the first one to use the old word, but we need to start talking about infusing more revenue into this town. And if it's not coming in a traditional way, through property taxes, or commercial development, or lack thereof, the only mechanism to do that is through a property, a property two-and-a-half override. And so that, to me, is when we need to keep our foot on the gas. And I'm not saying that's an easy decision for the town to make.
Yeah.
You know, to go forward to that, or if it's an easy thing for a taxpayer to have to absorb that. But absent any other solution, we need, we need to start talking about that. And when I've, actually Kelly and I were at a meeting the other day, and we, we communicated that to, to the, you know, to town officials, and I, I think actually they were pretty receptive to the conversation. I think there's just a sense around here that we might have hit the tipping point, and it's not just schools.
No.
Right, right.
It's, it's police, it's fire, it's DPW.
That's right.
There are things that we just can't do as a community anymore with our current tax base, so that's, that's the, you know, let's keep our foot on the gas. And I'm not, I'm not going to stop talking about it unless you tell me to, but.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I think next year is going to be even, it's another time to really rally, you know, for some, for some, some more funds. So we'll see, but.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think the good news is also, I mean, is I, if you, you look at this as a formula, the formula has changed from last year to this year, and that sort of change being the community really cohesively knitted itself together to make that ask, you know? I was unofficially keeping a, you know, a spreadsheet of the letters that were coming in, and I think there were like 40 or so, you know, letters to the town, really advocating, advocating for the schools and advocating for the need, and that's a huge, a huge difference. And it probably doesn't give, I know that it doesn't give a lot of solace or a lot of comfort when you have a child in the middle school, or you're going to have a child in the middle school next year. But there is something to be said for the progress, and if the formula works, there's a potential that that formula can be applied now with more energy, with continued energy from the community between now and town meeting. I don't know that for sure, but, you know, advancements, advancements have been made, and they could continue to be made in the short term, right? So, I mean, Martha's website, you know, the, sort of the consistent voice from the community has been, I think, really, really encouraging. And, you know, I appreciate that from you guys.
Good. Okay. Okay.
Great.
All right, action items, we're going to table the actual vote until the 19th. And then we need a vote to approve our school committee goals, so I just, I gave you a hard copy of what was on the Google Doc. So if everybody agrees, we'll just go with the new, new, same. Okay, and then the only other thing.
Well, so, so are we just doing the first four, and then the rest?
Well, no, the others are the same. So we have a leadership category.
I think there's too many.
Professional, okay.
That's what I emailed, that's what I emailed you about.
Right.
So, I, I would honestly, I, I think we all do support the development of a new technology plan. I think that's kind of a.
It doesn't need to be there?
No, it's done.
Okay.
I mean, we've, we have a plan, it's done. I, I just kind of feel like at this point in the game, it's, doesn't need to be there.
Okay.
Just my opinion, just my opinion. Except we, do we really have a five-year, I mean, that was what I understood that to mean, was do we have a five-year plan for what we're asking from the town?
I think Cheryl's got a really, really comprehensive.
Yeah, we have a committee.
And then I would argue under communication that one and two.
You know what, can I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt, as I'm just reading this. I, I think Peter might, this is Peter's.
Yeah.
I think he might have been talking about the one-to-one as I read this.
Yes, that's what, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, the.
But the prior.
We're doing it, yeah, we're doing it, yeah, yeah.
I think it was, I think it was in.
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
From the technology review, right on the, the standards.
I feel like it's done, I feel like it's kind of.
Well, we're implementing it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's just an idea.
It's part of the review committees, okay. So what, keep one, get rid of two?
Yeah, and then, I would jump down to communication, I think one and two are very same, it's just that number two includes budget, so you could kind of morph one.
Yep.
We'll seek opportunities, engage with the community, advocate for the district's residents, town leadership on various school issues, including budget, right? And just kind of have it one.
Okay.
It's just an idea.
You're consolidating.
Consolidating. And then under professional development, again, I think I would keep number two, that could include number one, I don't think we need two of them.
Sure. I would keep number one and not number two, because that's sort of, I'm not seeing people attending professional development opportunities, school committee members doing that.
And they, well, they both, they both address professional development, one and two, under professional.
Right, I like the way it's worded in one, learning opportunities.
That's fine, it's just, it's, it's focused on monitoring and evaluating, and the second one is more broad. So if, if somebody has another interest, then you still could do it. So number one folds into number two, I think, by a topic.
Okay. So just have, combine them into one.
We're folding and consolidating.
Want to rewrite these for me, Shannon?
Do you want me to look at things in the future? If I want, I'll stop.
Did you write them up and send them back to me? You didn't.
Yes, no, I didn't, I, but I sent you an email with what I thought.
No, you didn't.
Is it?
Don't bicker on television. No, because that's great feedback. So do we want to vote to accept these with Shannon's changes, and then we'll rewrite them?
Yes. And I, well, I'm happy to.
And then we'll put them on them.
I'll do the update.
Okay.
In my own words, not on Google Docs.
My, my.
You gotta start getting used to Google Docs.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept our school committee goals.
I move to accept the school committee goals as Shannon's going to re.
Consolidate.
Work them or consolidate them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Correspondence, other comments, issues for future meetings?
You said you had something.
I do, does anybody else? Because I'm the only one talking here. Okay. Here, I came up with two things, sort of going through the strategic plan stuff that came up, that I thought would be terrific. I would love to have at one of our meetings, a panel of teachers, and then maybe even students, talk about how they're using one-to-one, middle school to high school, because we get a lot of feed, community feedback, and some of the feedback was like, they're on the laptops too much, and what are we doing with this, and why do they need technology? And just hearing Dr. Baines, I happen to be in a group with her, and she's like, I can't even tell you the things that I can do now that I couldn't do before. And we had high school kids in the room saying, when we're in class, we're only on the laptop like 35% of the time. People think we're on the laptop all day long. So I would love to have those people here.
Great idea.
Okay. And then the other.
Give us some time to put that together.
Yeah, yeah, just some point between now and the end of the year. I know our June meetings are marathon meetings, but.
Sometime between now and before town meeting, maybe.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
She's on Friday.
Sorry.
We should still later.
She's coming.
Could you put that in a Google Doc?
But I won't.
Right. Just don't email it, Kelly.
And then the other thing to come out of it was, if we could, or guidance could develop sort of a, a bank of gap year ideas, because we talked about how the driving force in Duxbury is getting into college, but that's not really true for everybody, and a lot more, it's okay to do other things, whether you call it gap year, or other, or sort of there's this bank of kids who maybe aren't ready yet, and we don't address that. So that was just another thought. Anybody else? You want to talk about? Any other public comment before we end? No? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like that one-to-one presentation.